All to order, the city council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for January 11, 2021. Thank you for joining us. In a moment, you will see the flag come up on the screen, and when it does, if you would please stand as you are able, and join me with the pledge allegiance to the flag. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll of the members? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Denise Hoppy?
Present.
Didie Hutchinson?
Present.
Zachary Urban?
Present.
Rachel Holteem? Amanda Weaver?
Here.
Cory Stites?
Here.
Leah Dozen?
Here.
Valerie Nosler Beck?
Present.
Mr. Mayor, all eight members of council are present. Thank you. We have two proclamations tonight. Our first one is for National Radon Action Month, and I understand that Ken Johnstone, our community development director, is here to receive the proclamation. Ken, thank you for joining us tonight. So this is a proclamation in support of National Radon Action Month, January 2021. Whereas radon is an invisible, odorless radioactive gas that threatens the health and safety of our community, and whereas radon is a leading environmental cause of cancer mortality in the United States and the eighth leading cause of cancer mortality overall, and whereas the Colorado Rocky Mountain region has been ranked Zone One by the United States Environmental Protection Agency as an area with the highest potential radon possible, and whereas any home in Wheat Ridge, Colorado may have elevated levels of radon, even if homes in the same neighborhood do not, and whereas it is important to support recommended radon practices and policies to reduce radon exposure and protect our community's health and welfare, and whereas testing for radon is simple and inexpensive, and when identified, radon exposure can be addressed effectively, and whereas in the adoption of the 2018 International Codes on January 13, 2020, city council adopted Appendix F of the International Residential Code, requiring a minimum of passive radon mitigation in new residential construction to mitigate the transfer of radon gases from the soil into the home, and whereas Jefferson County Public Health, the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, the United States Environmental Protection Agency, and the American Lung Association are supporting efforts to encourage Americans to test their homes for radon, reduce elevated levels of radon, and build new homes with radon-resistant features. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of, that the Wheat Ridge mayor and city council formally designate January 1 through 31, 2021, as National Radon Action Month. When this whereof, on this 11th day of January 2021, Bud Starker, Mayor. So thank you for, Ken, Johnstone, for being here to accept this. Do you have some, some words you can say about radon and how we, how we handle that in our city?
Well, well, thank you, Mayor and Council. Glad to be here and glad to accept this proclamation. I don't profess to be a public health expert, but at the same time, I do think this is a, you know, a very important issue for public health, and in particular in Colorado with our unique geology and geography that predisposes us to greater risk, and it is a health risk indeed. So I would just thank Council for last year when you adopted the 2018 International Building Codes. You adopted Appendix F, as was noted in the proclamation, which is an appendix to the International Residential Code, and it requires at a minimum that all new residential construction in the city include passive radon protection. So that's a great, it's a great step forward in ensuring public health, better public health outcomes for all new residential construction in the city of Wheat Ridge. So thank you for the proclamation and for the recognition.
All right, Mr. Johnstones, thank you very much for joining us tonight. Our second proclamation is for National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and we have our new chief of police, Chris Murtha, on the, on the call with us tonight. Chris, now Chief, thank you very much for joining us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So this is a proclamation for National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, January 9, 2021. Whereas in 2015, Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, or Police Appreciation Day, was founded to highlight the support and appreciation of the general public for law enforcement, and whereas by founding the National Day of Recognition, the founders hoped to draw attention to the dedication of law enforcement officers who serve the public and make a difference while doing a job they love, and whereas National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day was founded to generate awareness of the dangers law enforcement officers face every day on the job while protecting the communities in which they live and work, and whereas National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day is led by community members as the Day of Recognition law enforcement professionals, as well as the sacrifices made by their families, and whereas not only do professionals in law enforcement serve and protect by putting themselves in danger every day, but they safeguard life and property, provide protection against violence and disorder, and shield the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression and intimidation. Now therefore, I Bud Starker, call upon all those living and working in Wheat Ridge, upon our business community and those in service, civil and educational organizations, organizations, to join us, our city council, in recognizing Law Enforcement Appreciation Day 2021, in honor of service of the women and men of the Wheat Ridge Police Department, and those across the country who served the community, their communities in law enforcement, and witness thereof in this 11th day of January 2021, Bud Starker, Mayor. So Chief, thank you very much for being here to accept this proclamation and all of the work that you do and your, your department do to keep our citizens safe and, and protect us in, in the times that we live.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and, and Council, and I appreciate the continued support on behalf of the men and women of the Wheat Ridge Police Department and law enforcement in the area. I know this, this year's proclamation, more than ever, really hits home, and it means more now than it, than ever. These are difficult times, and it's been a tumultuous year for law enforcement, but this community really stands by the police officers and the ethical work that they do every day to try and do a good job to protect everybody here and everybody in the, in the city of Wheat Ridge. So on behalf of those people, thank you for the proclamation, and I'm proud to be a new member of the Wheat Ridge Police Department, and despite the fact that it's been 11 months, it feels like 11 years, but I suppose that's the same for all of us. So thank you to everybody for your support, and we really do need it and appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Chief, and, and you're about to get your one-year stripe, and please express our, express our thanks to your department for the, for the great work that they do for our city. So thank you very much.
I will, thank you.
Okay, moving on down our agenda. Next is approval of the minutes, and the counselors in front of you, you have study session notes of December 7, 2020, council meeting minutes of December 14 of 2020, study session notes of December 21, 2020, and study session notes of January 4, 2021. Hopefully everyone had a chance to look through those. If there are any corrections, please speak now, otherwise we will let the minutes stand as presented. I see no corrections noted, so if, Mr. Clerk, if you would let those stand as presented, that will be terrific with our thanks. We are next at approval of the agenda. If I hear no objections, we will let the agenda stand as presented. So ordered. We will now move into our citizens' right to speak. This portion of our, our meeting, you, as a citizen, you may, you may speak on any item that is not on the agenda for a limit of three minutes. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand. We're in the Zoom, the virtual format. At the bottom of your screen, you will see a little icon that says participants. If you click that, at the bottom of the next screen, you will see a, a sign that says raise hand. If you will hit the raise hand, that will alert us that you would like to join us to speak, and we will bring you into the meeting. When we bring you in, if you would please give us your first name and your last name, please spell your last name for the record, and give us your address, and then you'll have three minutes to address the council, and this is any item that is not on the agenda. We will take public comment on agenda items when we, when we get there in the agenda. Michelle, do we have anyone with their hand raised that would like to speak at tonight's meeting?
No one with their hands raised, Mayor.
Okay. We'll give it one more, one more time. If you're on the telephone and you'd like to speak, you may speak up, unmute yourself and speak up, and we'll bring you into the meeting. And once again, if you'd like to speak, use the raise hand function. Any, any more takers on public comment tonight?
No, again, I don't see any hands up.
Very good. Then we will, we will move past our public comment and move to the next item, and that is item number one. This is our consent agenda with three items on it. Ms. Hoppy, would you please introduce these items, A, B, and C?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to present council agenda, or consent agenda items one, A, B, and C. One, A, Resolution Number 01-2021, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2021 to E-Bond fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation for the reappropriation and reincumbrance of the 2020 fiscal year encumbered funds in the amount of $2,748,421.94 for Wadsworth Boulevard right-of-way acquisitions. Consent agenda item 1B, motion to approve a payment to Colorado Intergovernmental Risk Sharing Agency, SIRS, for the 2021 property casualty premium in the amount of $320,615.44. Consent agenda item 1C, motion to approve in agreement with Molson Coors Brewing Beverage Company, Delaware Corporation, and its affiliate, Coors Brewing Company, to permit use of its property for staging and connection with the previously approved bayou ditch repair and the headgate replacement project.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve agenda item number one, A, B, and C?
I move to approve consent agenda items one, A, B, and C.
Second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Urban.
Mr. Stites got that, I think.
Oh, Mr. Stites got that? Okay, I stand corrected. Will, you know, we're, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna get to one time tonight, Mr. Urban. I know we will.
Our best.
Will the, will all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand, and the clerk will count the votes, and we will go to Ms. Weaver after he finishes counting the votes.
Mr. Mayor, the votes passed unanimously, eight to nothing.
Okay. And Ms. Weaver, did you, how do you vote on that? Aye or nay?
I vote in favor.
Good. Thank you very much. We will move to agenda item number two. Ms. Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 22-2020, An Ordinance Approving the Rezoning of Property Located at 4990 Parfett Street from Planned Commercial Development to Planned Industrial Development with an approval, with an approval outline, development plan, case number WZ-20-02/AXIS70W. At issue, the applicant is requesting approval of a zone change from planned commercial development to planned industrial development with approval of an outlined development plan for property located at 4990 Parfett Street, which is near the northeast corner of I-70 Frontage Road and Parfett. The purpose of this request is to prepare the property for the development of a large-format industrial land use.
Thank you very much. This is for an ordinance on second reading. This is a public hearing, a quasi-judicial public hearing. I am going to open the public hearing and announce that if you intend to speak on this item, that you, the, the words and your, your thoughts and speech will be the truth as you know it, so by speaking, you agree to that condition. So we have taken, we've opened the hearing, we've got everyone sworn in. Do we have a staff report on this, Mr. Goff?
We do, Mr. Mayor. Whoa. Our senior planner, Stephanie Stevens, will be presenting this evening.
Very good. Ms. Stevens, please continue.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen of the video presentation, and directly following, I'll play the applicant's presentation, and then myself and the applicant are both here for questions. So if you could just give me a moment to load. Okay, and please speak up if there's any issues with the audio.
You sound good.
Stephanie Stevens, and I'm the planner with the city of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. I'm presenting case numbers WZ-2002 and WZ-
We have lost the audio.
...for development of an industrial warehouse building. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. The property is within the city of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met. Therefore, city council has jurisdiction to hear this case. The subject property is identified on this slide with a red outline and is addressed as 4990 Parfett Street. It's bounded by Parfett Street to the west, I-70 Frontage Road to the south, Oak Street to the east, and West 50th Avenue to the north. The site is approximately 10.6 acres in size and is currently vacant. It's surrounded by a mix of longstanding industrial and commercial uses. Property went through rezoning to planned commercial development in 2005 with intentions to expand the adjacent Medved Auto Dealership Site that lies just west, but the plans never came to fruition and site remains undeveloped. Wheat Ridge Ward Commuter Rail Station lies northwest of the site, approximately three-quarters of a mile away. As mentioned, the property is currently zoned planned commercial development, or PCV. Most of the surrounding zoning is industrial. Southeast, east, and northeast of the property is zoned planned industrial development. North is industrial employment, and then to the northwest is Agricultural One, which contains an existing single-family home. To the west is the Medved Site, and it's zoned commercial one, and to the southwest is zoned commercial two. The request before you is for a rezon from planned commercial development to planned industrial development. Under the current zoning, the site can only be developed as an auto dealership, so rezoning is necessary because of the unique challenges of the site and proposal for a large-format industrial building for which city standards do not contemplate. Not all standards of IE Zone District can be met. For these reasons, PID zoning is most appropriate. The planned development process entails several steps before development can occur. With this application, we're looking at accomplishing all steps listed on the screen. Step one, outlined development plan, or ODP, establishes the zoning. Step two, the specific development plan, or SCP, provides site-specific design. Both step one and step two are a focus for the hearings. As for step three, subdivision, an administrative consolidation plan is currently being processed by staff and is under review. First, it will be helpful to get oriented on the site. This is a view from the southwest corner of the site at I-70 Frontage Road and Parfett Street looking northeast. The billboard site is not a part of the subject property. Here's another view from the midway point of Oak Street looking southeast. More photos were provided in the staff report, but this image is reflective of the condition of the longstanding vacant land. We'll start with the outlined development plan, or ODP, which establishes the PID zoning. The ODP document is two sheets in this case. The first page is the cover page with certification and signatures blocks. There's also a character of development statement, list of permitted uses and development standards, and other standard notes. The development standards is what we'll want to focus on here, and I'll go over that in just a minute. The second page includes the conceptual layout of the property, including access drives and building orientation, as well as architectural standards. The conceptual layout, or sketch plan, is meant to illustrate general building locations and circulation. I'll go through each of the architectural standards with you here in a moment. As for the sketch plan, this is a required component, but we won't focus too much on the sketch plan because we're also reviewing the SDP, which has much greater detail. The uses permitted for the ODP are all uses permitted in the city's established industrial employment, commercial one and commercial two zoning, with emphasis placed on encouraging industrial and commercial uses that support employment. The table on the screen summarizes the development standards that are being proposed, which are generally aligned with IE standards, exceptions to setbacks which are shown to be more restrictive. Note that the rear setback along Oak Street is actually proposed to be larger per landscaping requirements at 40 feet for loading. Keep in mind when comparing to the Medved PCV Site, that that site was proposed solely for auto dealership use. The development standards on this slide reflect those that are being requested to differ from or be modified from typical IE standards. I'll go through each one with you briefly to give you some context, but you can find more details in the staff report. The ODP categorizes parking by use with a request for ultimately less restrictive parking than the standard warehouse and sales uses would require by code, and based on comparable requirements for large-format industrial uses in other jurisdictions around the Denver metro area. The applicant is proposing two access points per public street to align with fire district requirements, and curb cuts are proposed to be a little bit wider to accommodate truck turning movements along Oak Street. Landscape requirements are proposed to be somewhat flexible where utilities or easements exist on site, but requires typical minimum required number of plants to be relocated elsewhere on site and to focus our attention on areas of higher priority, such as screening of parking areas and headlights. Enhanced bathrooms required to the northwest adjacent to the residential, as well as fencing, and on Oak Street on the loading side, an enhanced buffer of 40 feet is required. The ODP also requires a tree inventory and assessment of existing trees on the property to determine viability, and those that cannot be saved on site must be replaced at a two-to-one ratio. The applicant is also proposing a maximum fence or wall height of 10 feet versus the six feet typically allowed to sufficiently screen loading areas from adjacent uses. Architecture, which is the meat of the modifications being proposed and stems from the Architectural and Site Design Manual, the modifications are being proposed related to building placement, parking placement, articulation, materials, variation, transparency, and screening, all which directly relate back to the proposed large-scale industrial building lying adjacent to three straight frontages. Everything else meets code in terms of lighting, fencing, signage, and the like. The SDP is 13 pages and gets into the details of the project. The SDP has to comply with the ODP, and the cover sheet has a table that shows required and proposed development standards. The SDP is proposed to facilitate the construction of a single industrial warehouse building consisting of approximately 142,200 square feet. The resulting building is speculative and that tenants are not yet in place, but would accommodate businesses of varying sizes and largely target employment-related uses of industrial nature as allowed by the ODP. The building's designed for the main facade to front on Parfett Street, but loading on the east along Oak Street. Property will have two access points from Oak and two access points from Parfett Street. Standard parking wraps the building on the north, south, and west sides with a truck court and loading area on the east side. Site access, parking, building height, and setbacks comply with the ODP and are compatible with the surroundings. Sidewalks will be installed along Parfett, Oak, and 50th Avenue. The site's heavily encumbered by easements. As previously mentioned, there's a 100-foot public service company easement on the south side, as well as the Ridge Road Tributary, and then on the east is the bayou ditch, Arvada Channel, and store of pipes, all which are significant and limit development in these locations. This is the landscape plan for the site. The SDP proposes 26% of the site to be landscaped, including parking lot landscaping, perimeter landscaping, and a decent buffer on the south side. A total of 112 trees and 781 shrubs will be provided. A tree inventory and assessment was performed by an arborist, determined viability of existing trees on site, and all but one, and even that one was determined to not be super healthy, were deemed unviable. So with that, the applicant is proposing replacement of trees at a two-to-one ratio, as required by the ODP. The image on the screen shows a perspective view of the southwest corner elevation looking north from Parfett Street. The proposed architectural construction reflects mainly articulated site concrete panels and glass accents, and includes varying parapet heights, textures, colors, reveals, enhanced entries, windows, and features that help to break up the facade. The main entry includes an elevated glass line, enhanced architectural design on the south end of the building, which you can see here. All entries are recessed and include permanent canopies to help break up the monotony of the large-scale building. This is a perspective view of the east and south elevation from Oak Street. This is where you can see the loading area along Oak, which is proposed to be screened by 10-foot wing walls, which also help to break up the facade. As a requirement of the zone change process, a neighborhood meeting was held on April 21, 2020, in a virtual meeting format with 14 people from the public in attendance. Notes from that meeting are included in the staff report. Since Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city, we sent the application on referral to outside agencies, as well as completing our internal review. There are no remaining concerns or objections from outside agencies. Before the hearing, the property was posted for 15 days, and letters were sent to property owners within a 600-foot radius. We have not received any calls or emails to date. Before the hearing, the case is published in the newspaper, and this presentation was also made available to view on the Wheat Ridge Speaks website. No public comments were received in person, by phone, by email, or on Wheat Ridge Speaks. We use several criteria to evaluate the zone change requests, which includes consistency with the comprehensive plan, which is our major guiding document for land use. A full analysis of the criteria for consideration of the zone change are provided in the staff report. This image on the screen shows an excerpt of the comprehensive plan's structure plan, which designates the area in dark purple as the employment area designation. The ODP reflects uses, development standards, and architectural requirements that will help with economic growth, bring in jobs, and guarantee quality design in line with the employment area designation. Staff finds that the zone change request meets the criteria. It allows for compatible land use, complies with the comprehensive plan, is consistent with the intent of planned development zoning, and is necessary to accommodate a large-format industrial land use not contemplated in city standard codes. The SDP also meets criteria for review. The SDP complies with the purpose of a PID, is consistent with ODP, there's adequate infrastructure to serve the property, and it provides for quality design that meets the intents of our code. Ultimately, staff is recommending approval of both requests. Planning Commission also recommended approval to city council at the December 3 hearing. It should be noted that a recommended condition by the Planning Commission was placed on the SDP regarding the height of fencing and walls, but the applicant has since revised the ODP and SDP to address said condition, so staff has not included the condition for city council's consideration. More information can be found in the staff report. If city council approves the ODP and SDP at the hearing, then the zone change and SDP are formally approved, and development can commence. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Stephanie, before we move on, and, and Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I apologize. We should have been clearer about this. We needed to open both public hearings, both for this item two and item five, because staff's presentation is, concerns both items, and they both require a public hearing. Mr. Adal, could you help us backtrack?
Yes, if you could. There's no, no harm done. If the mayor would simply declare that the public hearing is also opened on agenda item number five, and we need what that item is, and if Ms. Dozeman could read the issue for item number five, then we will have corrected that, and we can proceed with the applicant's presentation, which is going to cover both items. But if you would start by opening the hearing on Resolution Number 03, 2021, as listed for item five, Mayor.
Okay, then I'm going to go, as Ms. Dozeman had introduced- Okay, then I'm going to go, as Ms. Dozeman had introduced item number three, we're going to have her introduce item number five. Ms. Dozeman?
Yes, number zero three dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution approving a specific development plan for property located at forty-nine ninety Parfett Street, case number WZ dash twenty dash zero three slash access seventy west.
Okay, and we've already had a presentation on that. I am going to, this is a a resolution and a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. It is quasi judicial. So if you intend to speak on this, by speaking, you agree to tell the truth as you understand it in this matter. So now we've opened a public hearing on items number three, number, let's see, two and five, right?
Two and five.
Two and five, and we've had a presentation on items number two and five. Mr. Dahl, do we need anything procedurally more to do?
Only if you would let all the participants and the potential persons testifying know that they, when they do testify, they can testify on both matters and combine their testimony. And they can speak on either one or both of the two matters at the time they testify. So we won't be taking a separate list of witnesses for each of the two. When it's your turn to testify, say everything you want to say about both the rezoning and the SDP.
Okay, so I'm going to reiterate what our attorney has advised us, that we've opened the hearing for number, item number two and number five, and you may speak and should speak with reference to both of those at this time because it is a consolidated public hearing. So with that, we've had the presentation, and before we go to questions from council, I would like to open it up to the public. If you're a member of the public, yes, Ms. Stevens?
Sorry, we actually have a presentation by the applicant as well.
Okay, then before we go to the public, we will go to the applicant. Is that Mr. Mitchell?
I will go ahead and share, but yes, it is Mr. Mitchell. I'll share the video presentation of his as well.
Okay, thank you very much and thank you for being here.
Of course. Okay, give it a second. Here we go.
Hello, everyone. My name is Matt Mitchell and I
And we seem to have lost our audio.
I will be presenting our proposal to develop a ten point six acre parcel of land adjacent to the Medved Autoplex into a Class A industrial logistics facility. This area depicts the site located between Parfett and Oak Street, just north of the I seventy frontage road between the Ward and Kipling exits on I seventy. The site is currently used as seasonal grazing pasture for John Medved's bulls and is only improved with perimeter barbed wire fencing and a livestock shelter in disrepair. It was most recently subject of a rezon case in two thousand and five, when the city approved an ODP designating the property as a planned commercial development for the purpose of expanding the Medved Autoplex with an additional auto dealership and related warehouse for parts distribution and auto service that was never developed. We are proposing to rezone the site to a planned industrial development to facilitate the construction of a single Class A industrial logistics facility consisting of one hundred and forty-two thousand two hundred square feet, with the goal of delivering a high-quality aesthetically pleasing building to an undeveloped site that will provide employers the most needed space to create local job opportunities for residents. The project will be a speculative development with no specific end user in mind at this time. However, the intention is to provide, again, a highly functional, modern industrial building that will accommodate businesses of varying sizes and would largely target users that need logistics space that could be utilized for distribution, light manufacturing and assembly, showroom, sales floor, wholesale operations as well as servicing supplier oriented business. Here you see the current inclusion Wheat Ridge Comprehensive Plan. The site is drawn in the employment district as an industrial employment use. The plan lists the intended uses for this district as light manufacturing, storage, warehouse and other industrial related uses. As such, our ODP as a planned industrial development is based on the industrial employment zoning standards, with few modifications to provide for certain efficiencies and functional design elements that are required for large scale Class A industrial logistics facilities like our proposed development to be successful. See here that our proposed planned industrial development is compatible with the surrounding uses that are planned industrial developments in south to our east to the north and IE to the north and ag use, including an Excel energy substation to our northwest and commercial, that is the Medved Autoplex to the west across Parfett Street. We will of our proposed development provide much needed and severely underserved industrial space in the city for the growth of the local business community and creation of new job opportunities. General rule of thumb in industrial today is that nine hundred square feet of new industrial space equates to roughly one new job. In that ratio at this building, that would equate to as many as a hundred and fifty new jobs for the city. Those job types could be a wide range of business entrepreneurs, wholesalers, engineers, sales team, craftsmen, service providers, with potential pay ranges anywhere from minimum wage to six figures plus. Mixed, the buildings would have mixed use employment. They would have office components, some warehouse, some light manufacturing assembly, again, depending on who the end users end up being. And then it would also significantly increase the tax revenue for the city. So as in undeveloped, undeveloped parcel of land in two thousand and eighteen, the total tax bill was nineteen dollars and eighteen cents. We estimate that two thousand and twenty-two and beyond, the full full assessed valuation, our real estate tax revenue for the city would be three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year. So to further demonstrate content with the proposed development, I want to provide some recent developments Westville has delivered in the metro area and talk through our actual experience with these. So first is Hub twenty-five, a four building, four hundred and twenty thousand square foot park we built in two thousand and seventeen. It's located at the junction of I twenty-five and I seventy-six with very prominent frontage on I twenty-five. It ended up leasing to nine tenants, three of which were showroom wholesale users, three were light manufacturers and three were distribution and fulfillment users. That job created about three hundred jobs and that equates to one job for fourteen hundred square feet. Initially, the design of those buildings won the two thousand
Stephanie, if you can hear us, we lost sound there on the presentation.
One point one four million square feet of completion. We'll deliver the first four buildings in two thousand and twenty-one and have already leased two of the buildings, pre-leased them to users. Building seven we leased to a sales, marketing and distribution user, that is Pepsi. And the second building we leased to a wholesaler and distributor of auto parts. Building seven alone, housing corporate marketing, corporate sales staff in their officeing, office component, and then distribution of finished products in the warehouse created over three hundred and fifty jobs. That would be one job for eight hundred and ten square feet. Again, the aesthetics of this park builds on the award-winning design of Hub twenty-five, but brings more architectural detail and creates increased amount of storefront class. So our proposed development brings this same award-winning design and market-leading functionality to this site in Wheat Ridge. The building is designed for the main facade of the building to front on Parfett Street, but will offer an elevated glass line and architectural design on the south end of the building for a first-class curb appeal along the west I seventy frontage road. The loading side of the building would then front on Oak Street, facing the existing industrial buildings east of Oak Street, but strained and buckered by a forty-foot setback and ample landscaping. With any logistics facility, the flow of traffic and primarily truck trips is always a key concern. In this case, with the guidance of the planning department city, we decided to orient our building to put our loading on Oak Street because it will focus the path of our truck trips onto West Fifth Avenue to get to and from the property from the Kipling exit on I seventy. This path is the existing truck corridor for the employment district, providing safe and efficient ingress and egress from the project that will work with the current alignment as well as the future alignment and design for the Kipling exit. In addition to the economic benefit that our proposed project would create in the way of jobs and increased tax revenue, the project will also design, construct and fund at significant cost to the development, a number of public infrastructure items that will benefit the city and our neighbors. The Ridge Road Tributary, which conveys regional stormwater from Arvada and Wheat Ridge from the regional ponds of the northwest, into the Arvada Channel will be piped and undergrounded into a fully enclosed system, creating a safer and maintenance-free conveyance versus the open ditch that exists on the site today. We will also extend the Arvada Channel Regional Stormwater System through to the west side of the site to be ready for further extension when the city has the opportunity. The Bayou Ditch, which exists as an open ditch on site, will likewise be piped and undergrounded for a safer and more maintenance-free condition that meets their water degree and design requirements today. With regard to street improvements, the project would further the development of the city's transportation structure plan by expanding, or rather extending West Fifth Avenue across the north end of the site. We are proposing to dedicate eighteen feet more of our frontage along Oak Street on the east side of the property than is required to widen Oak Street to a forty-foot wide ultimate street section that will not only provide the safe and efficient access and turning radius that our trucks will need, but will also benefit our planned industrial development and industrial employment user neighbors to our east and north that rely on Oak Street. We will also provide curb gutter and sidewalk along Parfett, Oak and the Fiftieth Avenue extension where none has previously existed. With regard to landscaping and buffer zones, we hired an arborist to inventory the trees existing on the site today. He determined that olive are either invasive species such as Russian olives and Siberian elms or are not healthy and viable long-term like the cottonwoods along Oak Street. Our ODP does provide for existing trees to be replaced at a two to one ratio with new trees of desirable species for shade, canopy, screening and quality. Code requires a minimum of sixty-five onsite trees. We have provided a hundred and one plus eleven street trees in the extended Fiftieth Avenue right away. Regarding the landscape buffers provided, we are providing for a minimum fifteen-foot landscape buffer along Parfett Street. And then at our northwest corner, code requires either a six-foot solid fence with a hedge or a fifteen-foot wide landscape buffer. Our design provides both a fifteen-foot buffer and a continuous hedge with a six-foot solid fence. And then again, on our east side of the property on Oak Street where the loading of the building will be, we are proposing a forty-foot landscape setback with ample trees and hedges to screen the loading utility side of the building. We're taking great care to design and orient our proposed building in a manner that will be compatible with and complementary to our neighboring properties. We hope and anticipate that the proposed development will be a valuable asset to the city, bringing an award-winning design to a prominent western entry gateway location in Wheat Ridge, providing increased tax revenue, public infrastructure improvement and much needed space for the business community to grow and create new job opportunities in the city. Thank you for your time and for your considerations.
Okay, so that ends the presentation. Thanks for bearing with me on some of the technical issues there, but myself and the applicant are here for questions if you have them. Thanks. You are muted.
Mayor, you're on mute.
Thank you very much for your presentation. And before we go to questions from council, we will go to the public for any, any comments on this, on this agenda, these two agenda items, number two and number five. You may comment on either one of them. If you are a member of the public, now is your opportunity to speak on these. If you would please raise your hand in the Zoom format, you'll have three minutes to, I know, actually, we don't limit this discussion on our public hearings. So we're happy to bring you into the conversation. Give us your first name, last name and address, and you may speak on these. Is there anyone with their hand raised, Ms. Check?
Uh, no, Mayor.
Okay, give it one more, one more call. If you would like to speak on item, agenda item number two or five, now is your opportunity. Anyone, okay, we'll close our citizens' comment section and go to questions from council. If you have a question, please raise your hand. Ms. Nosler Beck?
Hey, thanks very much, Stephanie and Matt. Stephanie or Ken, just looking at how the trucks are going to get to the building, if and when, well, when the Kipling interchange is changed up, will that route still stay the same in terms of those entry points with those, with the roads, I think it was Oak Street?
I don't believe that's anticipated to change. Ken, do you have any idea with the Kipling interchange?
Yeah, that same, that same route from Kipling over will, will be accessible from the signalized intersection at, at Fifty Second.
Thanks.
Thanks.
We did get, to just address that, we did see the CDOT's future plan for the diverging diamond redesign of that intersection, which frankly, you know, it's kind of weird the first time you drive through those, but once you get used to them, they do flow very efficiently and very safely. That, the, what that will do is that will cut off access from trucks exiting seventy at Kipling now, trying to get over three lanes of traffic to that first light at the motel, which we're specifically not planning to do, but that will eliminate that ability, which frankly will make it safer for everyone. And so, yes, we're aware of that coming and our truck traffic paths shouldn't be affected by that.
Thank you. Additional questions from, from council? I had one for you, Mr. Mitchell. You have loading docks on the east side. That's your primary, the way you're going to load trucks is, is loading dock operations?
That's correct. To be a, you know, highly functional Class A industrial building, you have to be able to provide a variety of loading configurations and dock high loading is the preferred method for most of our tenants in these buildings. But it does provide a mix, so that at the far north, far south end, there will be grade level ramped loading. And in the center where your utilities are, there will be additional ramped loading. And so these tenant, these buildings are designed, or this building is designed specifically to be able to demise down to as many as six individual spaces to meet a variety of, you know, end users and their exact space requirements and all providing dock high and grade level loading. Again, it's, it's trying to cast as wide a net as possible to be able to suit anybody that may need this kind of space.
Thank you. Additional questions from council? Ms. Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a question, but I just would like to state what I think what an attractive building that is. And also I really do appreciate how you are investing in the landscape, doing different trees and a lot of them look like they're kind of native trees and choke cherries and things like that. I really do appreciate that. Thank you. I hope they get water.
We do. Actually, our landscape irrigation plan got approved by Denver Water this morning. And so they are looking at that now. We are, we do plan to be a long-term owner and operator of this facility. And so it is in our best interest to build a high-quality project that is going to be aesthetically pleasing, but also relatively maintenance-free going forward so that it's utility years and years beyond our, you know, initial tendency, whatever that may be.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Holtein?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to echo Councilmember Hutchinson's recognition of just the above and beyond landscaping. I think that's definitely appreciated. I have a question that I think the answer is apparent, but I just want to confirm. We recently adopted a revised noise ordinance and in the ordinance, it specifies just industrial use. And I just want to confirm that planned industrial use falls categorically in that, that industrial use, just so that it's subjected to the same, same things that we're trying to address with the industrial use in that area.
Yes, you are correct.
Well, that was it. I agree. It's, I think it's a really attractive proposal and I think I appreciate that it's, it's solving existing problems and attracting new, new investment in our community and I'm looking forward to seeing it move forward. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments from, from the council before we close the public hearings and go to a vote? Okay, I'm going to close both of the public hearings on item number two and now Okay, I'm going to close both of the public hearings on item number two and now item number five. Mr. Dahl, should we run separate motions on each of these or consolidate them?
Separate.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, separate motions take number two first.
Okay.
And number five second.
I can do that. All right, Ms. Dozeman, may I have a motion on agenda item number two?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number Twenty-two dash twenty-twenty, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at Forty-nine ninety Parfett Street from planned commercial development to planned industrial development with an outlined development plan on second reading, and then it takes effect fifteen days after a final publication for the following reasons. One, the Planning Commission has recommended approval of the rezoning after conducting a proper public hearing. Two, the proposed rezoning has been reviewed by the Community Development Department, which has forwarded its recommendations of approval. And three, the proposed rezoning has been found to comply with the criteria for review in Section Twenty-six dash six-zero-three of the Code of Laws.
And do I hear a second? A second by Mr. Urban. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand, and will the clerk please count the votes?
Ms. Weaver, how do you vote?
In favor.
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed eight to nothing.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Stevens and Mr. Mitchell, thank you for joining us, bringing this project. Mr. Mitchell, is this something that you'll be starting construction on right away?
It will be. We have a plat and SIA to execute, and we have a building permit submittal forthcoming this week.
Very good. All right, well, congratulations. We look forward to seeing your project.
Mr. Mayor, we need to do item number five, motion two.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we can get, get to item number five. Ms. Dozeman, may I have a motion on item number five?
Yes, I move to approve Resolution Number Zero-three dash twenty-twenty-one, a resolution approving a specific development plan, property located at Forty-nine ninety Parfett Street for the following reasons. One, City Council has conducted a proper public hearing that meets all public notice requirements as required by Section Twenty-six dash one-oh-nine of the Code of Laws. Two, the proposed specific development plan has been reviewed by the Planning Commission, which has forwarded its recommendation of approval. And three, all requirements of a specific development plan have been met.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Mr. Urban. Is there discussion on the motion?
I think he, I think it was somebody else, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, was it?
Oh, it was me.
Who's, who's going to, who's going to allege to, who's going to allege to have, have done it this time? Mr. Urban, you got it last time, Mr. Who was?
I think it was Mr. Stites, and they do sound
That was me.
A lot alike.
I'm getting it before he's even getting off mute.
All right, so it's Mr. Stites. Very good. Okay, then, then cease the frivolity, and we will go to discussion on the motion. Okay, seeing no discussion, will all those in favor of the motion please signify by raising your hand, and will the clerk please tally the votes?
Ms. Weaver?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Okay, I get to thank you, Ms. Stevens, again, and you, Mr. Mitchell. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
We look forward to seeing your project in town.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everyone's time.
Thank you. Okay, then we will, we will go now to agenda item number three. Mr. Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number Twenty-one dash twenty-twenty, an ordinance approving an outlined development plan, ODP, amendment to change the sign standards on property zone planned commercial development, PCD, and located at seven-seven-six-zero West Thirty-Eighth Avenue, case number WZ dash twenty dash zero-seven. At issue, the applicant is requesting an online, or an outline development plan amendment to revise the existing sign standards, which are more restrictive than the city's regular sign code. The applicant is requesting an amendment such that the city's regular sign code applies to the subject's property. This, in turn, would allow the installation of a new freestanding sign.
Okay, this is a, an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing, and it is quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing, and if you intend to speak on this item by, by speaking on it, you agree to tell the truth as you understand it in this matter. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our planner, Zareen Tasneem, is here this evening for this item.
Okay, Ms. Tasneem, please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am going to first play the staff presentation that's been pre-recorded, and then play the applicant presentation. The applicant is also here tonight to take questions later on. Good evening. My name is Zareen Tasneem, and I am a planner with the City of Wheat Ridge's Community Development Department. I am presenting case number WZ twenty-oh-seven, which is a request to amend the underlying planned commercial development zoning development standards for signage at seven-seven-six-zero West Thirty Avenue. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. The property is within the City of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and therefore, City Council has jurisdiction to hear this case. This is a twenty-eighteen aerial with the property outlined in red. The property is located on the south side of West Thirty-Eighth Avenue, located between Yukon Court and Allison Street, about a block west of the intersection of Thirty-Eighth Avenue and Wadsworth Boulevard, where the Corners and the Wilmer Center Commercial Centers are located. Further to the west is the Lutheran Medical Campus. According to the Jefferson County assessors, the lot measures about ninety-one thousand square feet, or just over two acres in size, and contains an office building built in nineteen-seventy-nine. The existing four-story building on the site contains primarily offices for reunion. The property is zoned planned commercial development. To the north and east are primarily commercial uses, which are zoned planned commercial development, PCD, mixed-use commercial, MUC, and restricted commercial, RC. To the immediate southeast and south of the site are multifamily residential uses, zoned residential three, and planned residential development, PRD. To the west are properties zoned residential two, R-two, and consisting of mostly single-family residential homes. This is a view of the subject property looking southeast, which shows the existing freestanding sign. The existing sign is just under ten feet, with the sign face measuring about eighty-two square feet. For the current ODP that applies to the site, one project identification sign is permitted at the site entrance with a maximum area of fifty square feet and a maximum height of ten feet. Many older ODPs were written to allow only what was proposed at the time, and in that sense are perhaps more restrictive. There is nothing unique about the property that warrants a more detailed or unique regulatory framework for signs. The ODP did not anticipate a future change in signage, and it is appropriate to recognize such a change at this time. A new freestanding sign that aligns with the city's sign code cannot be achieved through variance and may only be achieved through an amendment to the ODP. This table compares the existing freestanding sign conditions to the existing ODP sign standards and what could be allowed by amending the sign standards to match the city's standard sign code. By changing the ODP sign standards to follow the city's sign code, not only would it bring the existing sign into conformance, but it will also encourage reinvestments in a property since the applicant would like to install a new sign. The vast majority of properties in the city comply with the sign code, including most properties in the immediate area. Therefore, the amendment would result in signs that match the character of the area. As a requirement of the ODP amendment process, a neighborhood meeting was held on July seventh, two thousand and twenty, in a virtual Zoom meeting setting due to COVID-nineteen regulations. No members of the public attended that meeting. Prior to the neighborhood meeting, staff received one email from a neighbor in support of the proposal. The notes from the meeting are included in the staff report. Since Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city, we sent the application on referral to outside agencies, as well as completed an internal review. We did not receive concerns or objections from outside agencies. Planning Commission recommended approval at a public hearing on November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty. Before the hearing, the property was posted for fifteen days, and letters were sent to property owners within six-hundred-foot radius. Comments collected on Wheat Ridge Speaks will be reviewed by City Council members and entered into the public record. Ultimately, staff is recommending approval of their request. In terms of process, any amendment to an ODP is processed like an ODP and is required to meet the ODP criteria. Staff provided that analysis in the staff report and is recommending approval of their request because it meets those criteria. The proposed amendment does not result in an adverse effect on the surrounding area. The amendment will provide opportunity for reinvestment. The amendment aligns with the changing needs of the development, and there is nothing unique on the property that warrants property-specific sign code standards. Therefore, it is appropriate for the site to comply with the city's standard sign codes. Planning Commission will recommend a decision to City Council, who will review their request also. If City Council approves their request, then the ODP amendment is approved. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add that we did not receive any comments on Wheat Ridge Speaks or through any other communications such as email, phone calls, or written letters. Now I'm going to load the applicant to play.
Hi, this is Kevin Schneider. I'm the Secretary Treasurer for UFCW Local Seven. We're wanting to replace the old outdated sign in front of our building, which is located at seventy-seven-sixty West Thirty-Eighth Avenue here in Wheat Ridge. And the sign and our building are both about forty years old, and we're looking at taking down the old sign and putting up a new sign. But in order to do so, we need to have an outlined development plan amendment for our property to make sure that the new sign is within the current standards and regulations of the general sign regulations for the City of Wheat Ridge. So we're asking that that be approved. Our union represents workers throughout the community at King Supers and Safeway and Albertson's, as well as Kaiser Permanente. So your considerations with regards to approving our requested new sign and the amendment is appreciated. Thank you.
Okay. Is that, do you have any, any further remarks, Mrs. Tasneem?
Tasneem. I do not have any other comments, but the applicant is here tonight if he'd like to make any additional comments.
Thank you. Mr. Schneider, is there anything further you'd like to say?
Yes, just briefly, thank you very much, Mayor and Council, for hearing us tonight. We appreciate your time. The primary tenant that we have at our location on the first floor is Wheat Ridge Oral Surgery. The doctor has been there for over twenty years as our tenant. She's very interested in utilizing the new electronic sign for advertising purposes to gain clients for her Wheat Ridge Oral Surgery operation. So that's something that I know she has expressed interest in. She's very anxious. She's, her office manager has contacted me multiple times to see where we're at with regards to getting the new sign process and in place. So we're hoping to have a productive and positive meeting tonight.
Thank you. Okay, before we go to questions from council, I would like to open this up to the public for public comment. If you'd like to comment on this agenda item, now is your opportunity. If you'd raise your hand in the Zoom format, we will bring you into the meeting, and if you would please give us your first name and last name and spell your last name, and give us your address. You'll be able to address this item. Ms. Check, do we have anyone with their hands raised?
No, Mayor.
Okay, well, one more time, if you'd like, if you're a member of the public and would like to speak on this item, you may do so now. Please raise your hand in the Zoom format or speak up if you're on the telephone. We'll bring you into the meeting. Okay, no one, no one there, so we will close our public comment and open this up to questions from council. If you have a question, please raise your hand, and I'll call on you. Not everybody at one time. Mr. Urban?
Thank you. Do we have a picture of what the sign is going to look like? Or it's indicated in the Planning Commission that there is a picture of it presented there, but I haven't seen anything. That doesn't, I can't even see that, Kevin, I'm sorry.
Do we have anything? We didn't have anything in the packet.
Try pulling up an image or something. I just want to preface that by saying that's the proposed sign. It hasn't been approved through any building permits or any
Sure, I get that.
Not the final product.
Did we think we were going to be able to bring up a rendering of the sign, or is it, or?
Mr. Mayor, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, I'm trying to look to see if I
Okay. Perhaps while we're looking for that file, is there any other questions that we may ask at this time, Ms. Hulteen? Are you, do you have some more questions, Mr. Urban?
Yeah, I just have one additional question. When we're dealing with the electronic sign, I've seen at least one other sign in the city that is advertising, off-premise advertising. I just want to confirm that the, with electronic sign, it can only be advertising for businesses on that property, correct?
Can you take on that one, or Mr. Dahl?
Yeah, I can take it with Jerry's support. It's actually, it's a good question, Mr. Urban. It's a little tricky answer. With the most recent Supreme Court, U.S. Supreme Court, Reed versus Gilbert, determinations in terms of requiring content-neutral signage, it's, it's not permissible for the city to regulate the content. So should this property owner choose to, you know, give the rights to use their signage to some other entity, the city does not have really, have a strong position to regulate the content of the sign.
Okay, but our code is currently defines that, correct? Or is that something that just wouldn't be enforceable in court, is what you're saying?
Yeah, so we went, when we most recently amended the, comprehensively amended the city's sign code, we did it with a great emphasis on having content neutrality. And actually, we're fortunate to have Mr. Dahl to assist us in that effort, as that's something that he's done for some other jurisdictions prior to us as well.
And frankly, we, Jerry Dahl here, we, we were able to place as many restrictions as, as I felt would, would pass muster under the Supreme Court's decision on, on signage without regulating content, as Ken mentions. And I'm, I'm confident that what the city's regulations do is as much as the city can do. within the limitations of the, of the Supreme Court case. And, and by and large, I think, found that that approach has worked really pretty well across state and other jurisdictions that have done similar things. I'm looking for the specific references in our sign code right now. But I think we've done, done as well as we possibly can given those limitations.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Did that take care of all your questions, Mr. Urban? Okay, Ms. Holtein?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Along the same lines of inquiry, would the applicant, if this revision to the zoning code is adopted for an electronic sign, do they need to seek special permission for electronic sign or is that automatically granted?
They do not. We do have provisions within our sign code for electronic signs.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. If everybody's had a look at the sign, could we bring that down off the screen, please? Thank you. Ms. Hoppy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question about it being an electronic sign. I know that we have some business owners that are more east on 38th Avenue between Wadsworth and Sheridan that wanted electronic signs. And because of the zoning, because they're mixed-use neighborhood zoning, I believe, electronic signs were not allowed. So with this being on the west side of Wadsworth, if it was not that we were trying to make a change to the ODP, would it, would an electronic sign still be allowed? So like with their neighbor, the, the market, Vanilla's Market, would they be able to get an electronic sign just with their, with their standard zoning where they're in right now?
So the mixed-use neighborhood or the MUN zone district specifically prohibits changeable copy flashing signs and LED electronic signs? And that's specific to that zone district. Other zone districts do permit for electronic signs.
So I'm, I'm assuming that Vanilla's is probably a C1 or something like that. So under like a C1, C2, then electronic signs would be allowed under that zoning?
Correct.
So if this property was zoned a C1 and it didn't have the ODP that we needed to make adjustments to, then it would have already been allowed for that property?
Correct.
Thank you. Additional questions from council before I close the public hearing and go to a vote? Ms. Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is this going to be a flashing sign or just lit up?
So we don't allow flashing signs. We do allow electronic mass messaging boards, but we do have provisions in our sign code that restrict changes to, I believe, eight seconds. So it has to stay static for eight seconds before it can change to another screen. So no crazy like flashing star kind of animations or anything like that.
Well, my concern about that is those types of lights and things can trigger migraines and seizures and things on people. So if it's just like static or whatever, you know, that's, that's okay.
Yeah, I think of it more of as more a like PowerPoint slideshow feature where you'll see one screen for eight seconds and then you'll see like another screen for eight seconds. And speaking to kind of illumination in general, we do require signs that are electronic to have a dimming feature so they can be dimmed. And I believe code enforcement also has some instrument that can regulate the illumination factor that's.
So the part of the sign that was a flag that was shown is the part that's going to change pictures or something?
Yes, that's correct. It's the, the flag part is the illuminated part that would have the changing messages on it.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, any more questions before we, before we close the public hearing and go to a vote? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and Mr. Stites, a motion is in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve of council bill number 21-2020 in ordinance approving an outline development plan ODP amendment to change the sign standards on property zone planned commercial development, PCD, and located at 7760 West 38th Avenue on second reading and that it take effect 15 days after final publication for the following reasons. One, the planning commission has recommended approval of the ODP amendment after conducting a proper public hearing. Two, the proposed ODP amendment has been reviewed by the Community Development Department, which has forwarded its recommendation of approval. And three, the proposed ODP amendment has been found to comply with the criteria for review in section 26-303 of the Code of Laws.
And we have a second by Ms. Dozeman, correct? Is that correct? Okay, thank you very much. We have a motion and a second by Ms. Dozeman. Is there discussion on the motion? Ms. Hoppy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm, I'm going to vote yes for this specific change to this ODP. However, you know, I do just want to let people understand that there are people who are on the east business and property owners who are on the east side of Wadsworth on 38th Avenue who want this type of sign. I, I don't necessarily think this type of sign is appropriate on, on the east side because there's a credit sprinkling of more residential in there and lighter, not necessarily office buildings necessarily. But I just, you know, I want to say that I only support this because it's on the west side of Wadsworth in a very much more commercial area where there's already newer signs because of the newer corners. And, you know, we will potentially see some, some new signage on the corner once the, once the corner, the northwest corner of 38th and Wadsworth gets developed. So that's why I'm supporting this because on the west side.
Thank you. Additional discussion, Ms. Holtein?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To Ms. Hoppy's point, I realize this is a little bit tangential, but since I've, I've also talked to property owners east of Wadsworth about this issue. And Mr. Johnson, can you confirm if a property owner east of Wadsworth was interested in this type of sign? Is that something they could pursue through a variance?
Ms. Holtein, not through a variance. It would really require either a code amendment or a request to rezone the property to a planned, a zoning designation where they would develop their own development standards.
Okay, thank you.
Additional discussion on the motion. Okay, seeing none, will all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand? And would the clerk please uphold the counsel? Ms. Weaver?
I'm in favor.
Mr. Mayor, the motion is passed unanimously. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Snyder and Ms. Zazneem for being with us tonight. We will go, we will go now to agenda item number four. Ms. Hutchinson, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Council Bill number 23-2020, an ordinance repealing and reenacting section 26-609 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning access to public streets and making conforming amendments, case number ZOA-20-07. Do I read the issue?
Yes, why don't you go ahead and read the issue?
The zoning code requires that all new development have access to public streets. It outlines several stipulations for residential and non-residential developments. Code section 26-609 discusses access requirements but does not reflect current development patterns. So the proposed amendment repeals and reenacts this section and updates cross-references. The purpose of the amendment is to provide more specificity for commercial and industrial land uses, more flexibility for residential land uses, and more detailed guidance overall. The overarching goal is to ensure that access and circulation design support logical and high-quality site design.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. This is a public hearing. It is not, not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. Planning Manager Lauren McLack is here this evening.
Okay, Ms. McLack, welcome and continue whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening for the record. Lauren McLack with the Community Development Department. I don't have any slides tonight, but I did want to offer just maybe a little more context. And then I'd be happy to take any of your questions. The provisions in the code related to access have really been unchanged for nearly 50 years. And yet our development and land use patterns, as you well know, have evolved quite a bit over the last several decades. We're seeing mixed-use projects now. We see townhome projects, large-scale multifamily projects. And those are all project types that our original zoning code just didn't contemplate and projects that we didn't see being developed in the city in the 80s, 90s, or even the early 2000s. So this code section 609 in the zoning code, it outlines stipulations for how a site gets access to the city's street network. And the current language allows, as Ms. Hutchinson read, wide discretion in the approval of access for commercial and industrial developments. But it doesn't include any specific consideration. So it feels kind of like a black box when our staff give developers comments about their access. And we don't have good codes to point to in terms of the rationale for our comments. Conversely, for residential projects, the code is fairly limiting and it really doesn't address the multifamily or townhome context at all. And so while we have historically relied on planned development zoning, this misalignment between the code and our development patterns was not historically an issue. But the code is certainly overdue, we think, for an update so that it works better across the board regardless of zoning or use. And the ordinance that we're proposing retains that fundamental requirement that a site have access to the street network, but it adds also a series of specific considerations for how best to do that, how to provide street access to a specific project. That's best practice and it's really been something we've been trying to do increasingly in our code over the last 20 years to just be more explicit in stating our expectations and the criteria we're using for review for the benefit of applicants, the public, staff, and decision-makers. Access looks different for every project that we have, whether it's private or public access from a street or an easement. So to make those designs better and to make better decisions, the ordinance is itemizing factors such as maintenance and fire access, land use, block length, and the merits of alternate design. So we're just trying to remove that black box of what we're thinking about when we're making access designs or decisions. In the commercial context, that list of factors really gives us a better basis for our review, as I mentioned, and in giving comments back to applicants and letting them know what we're thinking. And in the residential context, it eliminates the four-unit limit that we currently have that doesn't well serve the variety of housing options that we're seeing come to the city and also can frankly result in some illogical subdivision designs. We've provided one example of those in the staff report. We'll continue to let the underlying zoning dictate the use and the density as it should. And we're recommending approval of this ordinance to ensure that access designs are safe and logical. I've included, as I mentioned, a few examples in the staff report. Every project you've seen has a different sort of access configuration and rationale. I can pull up the examples if we need to look at them, but otherwise I'm happy to take any of your questions.
Thank you very much. Before we go to questions of council, I'd like to open it up to the public for a comment on this item. If you would like to speak on item number four, you may do so now. If you would please raise your hand in the Zoom format, we'll bring you into the meeting. And when we do, please give us your first name, your last name, and your address. And then you may speak. Ms. Check, do we have anyone with their hands raised to speak on this item?
No.
Okay, I'll ask one more time. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on this issue. If you would like to speak, now is your time. Raise your hand in the Zoom format or speak up now. Okay, I don't hear anybody. We'll close our public comment portion and open it up for questions from council. You have a question? Raise your hand. I'll, I'll start with one. Ms. McLack, we, we've had a lot of discussions in this council over the years about flag lots and that's a way to access a, a piece of land in our city. Is that, is that contemplated under this access scheme?
We don't address flag lots specifically. The considerations related to flag lots are in the subdivision regulations, which is a separate article. The overlap here is in terms of how that flag lot gets access. And the provision that applies is unchanged in requiring a minimum width of the driveway. That's a width that's established by the fire district. So we do retain the requirement that we provide access to that flag lot, but we don't speak in this particular ordinance to the sort of merits of flag lot designs in general.
Okay, thank you. Additional questions on this item or comments before we close the public hearing? Going once, going twice. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and Ms. Hutchinson, a motion is in order.
Thank you. I move to approve council bill number 23-2020 in ordinance repealing and reenacting section 26-609 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning access to public streets making conforming amendments on second reading and that it takes effect 15 days after final publication.
Second.
Second, and if you, if you made the second, would you please raise your hand? Okay, Ms. Hoppy, so that's a good way to do it. Do we have discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by raising your hand and will the clerk please tally the votes? Ms. Weaver?
I'm in favor.
Mr. Mayor, the motion is passed unanimously. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much, Ms. McLack, for that presentation. We will move now to item number six on the agenda. Mr. Urban, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 02-2021, a resolution concerning the leaseback of property located at 7575 West 44th Avenue to Bank of the West. At issue, the proposed improvements to Wazza Boulevard require that additional rights of way be purchased to allow the construction of public improvements in order to facilitate the acquisition of property at 7575 West 44th Avenue and subsequent relocation of Bank of the West. Staff is requesting the city council approve a resolution authorizing leasing the property back to the Bank of the West until April 30th, 2021.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this?
I'm not quite sure. I don't think we have much of a presentation, but Mr. Johnson is here to give a little bit more detail maybe and answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. This is a resolution of the council. Before we go to questions from council, I'll open it up to the public. If you would like to speak on this issue, please raise your hand in the Zoom format.
Let's see, Mr. Mayor, I'm handling this now and I don't pay anybody.
Okay, one more time, if you want to speak on item number six, now is your opportunity. Raise your hand or speak up. Nobody yet? Okay, we'll close our public comment and go to questions from council. Do we have any questions on this item? Okay, seeing none, may I have a motion on item six, Mr. Urban? Oh, Ms. Hutchinson, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question. I, I just want some clarification. Is the city taking that whole great big building where Bank of the West is or what?
Yeah, thanks for the question, Ms. Hutchinson. So the, the building that we're taking would be at the northeast corner of 44th and Wadsworth. So it's a, it's a fairly small building that just occupies that, that hard corner.
Okay.
It's not the first bank building.
It is not.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, motion, Mr. Urban?
I move to approve resolution 02-2021, a resolution concerning the leaseback of property located at 7575 West 44th Avenue to Bank of the West.
We have a motion and a second by Ms. Holtein. Do we have discussion on the motion? Seeing none? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hands and the clerk count the votes.
Ms. Weaver?
I'm in favor.
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. That, I believe, concludes our the business items on our agenda. I would like to go to City Managers Matters. Mr. Goff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. I mentioned this last week, but Jefferson County has a couple of opportunities for our local businesses. And there is a new grant program for small businesses that is open. Their application is on the Jefferson County website. And this is being funded through the state of Colorado that passed legislation a few weeks ago to provide additional funding to small businesses who are impacted by the COVID. So if any businesses are out there, City Council, please spread the word. Staff did send an email out to our, our business list to make sure that all the businesses are aware of that grant program. Then also, as we mentioned again last week, Jefferson County is standing up the five star certification program that was approved by the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. And the county's not quite eligible yet until our COVID numbers, metrics are at a certain point, but we, we feel we're going in the right direction and we may be eligible very soon. So the county is pre-certifying businesses who may be interested once the county's eligible. So you can also go to the Jefferson County website and submit a letter of interest in the five star certification programs. So and again, we notified most, hopefully all of our businesses of that program also. So a couple, a couple of programs to help our businesses through this COVID pandemic until we, we see some better days. So thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. Introduce our, go to our attorney, Mr. Dahl.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to elected officials matters. Start with our clerk, Mr. Kirk Patrick.
Nothing new this evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I don't know if Mr. Miller is on. I didn't see him on there. But we will go then to Ms. Nosler Beck.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to remind folks that the deadline for boards and commissions is January 15th at, I think, 11:59 PM. And so you can go to the website and find out what's available. I also encourage people to check out the task force. That deadline has been pushed back to January 15th as well. Maybe your New Year's resolution was to get we're involved in your community. This is a great opportunity to do just that. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Nosler Beck. Ms. Dozeman?
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Weaver and I are planning to do a District Three meeting on February 6th. It's going to be at the rec center. It's also going to be via Zoom. So it's going to be a hybrid. It'll be at 9:30 in the morning. We can take 25 people at the rec center according to the, to the COVID guidelines and then as many as can be on Zoom. So there will be more details out in the, and a link to all that here in the coming weeks. But February 6th, 9:30 in the morning, District Three residents at the rec center or on Zoom. So thank you very much. By the way, just make sure that even though the holidays are over, you've got to get out, replenish all the stocks and all that stuff that you had. Make sure you get it in Wheat Ridge. So if you can find it, find it, buy it at Wheat Ridge. And then with everything going on in the world, please take care of your neighbors.
Thank you. Ms. Weaver? We, we don't see you, but we certainly hear you. So any, anything for our, our listening audience tonight?
Nothing, thank you, other than to second the announcement for our District Three meeting in February. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two things. One is just in light of the radon resolution tonight, I just want to make mention that CDPHR, Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, does offer free radon tests for Colorado residents. You can, you can just Google it. I will send the link to our clerk so that is available to the public. But every household, if they have not already requested one, is eligible. And I highly recommend people, having been in real estate for 18 years, people were very surprised when they have radon tests, find out that they had it and oftentimes had lived for a long time with it. So I encourage everyone, if you are unaware of the radon level in your house, please, please get, get tested. And CDPHR makes it free. So again, I'll get that to the clerk. My second thing is a question really to city staff. I attended an online seminar this week about some of the modifications communities have done in COVID to help their businesses adapt. And one of the things that came up was guidelines around what constitutes outdoor dining and really recognizing that a lot of businesses who are trying to modify their outside spaces in the winter to, to be places where people can eat are really recreating indoor spaces. And the public health official who was speaking really said that there's guidelines but not regulations. And I'm just wondering if, if we at the city have really taken a look at what constitutes indoor and outdoor environments in relation to being, you know, just being cognizant and cautious about our COVID environments?
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's a good statement and observation, Ms. Hulteen. And, and I've, I've heard of some businesses, not necessarily in Wheat Ridge. I think there probably, there might be some in Wheat Ridge that are, like you said, creating outdoor spaces that really are indoor spaces and are not following the guidelines fully. You know, we, we do have the guidelines on the website. I, I can tell you we're not actively inspecting or enforcing, I don't believe, unless Ken Johnstone has any. I'm not sure what our building department does. Some, some of the outdoor furniture and structures, I think, have to be inspected. But Ken, do you have any input on that?
Not specifically. Well, a couple of things. I mean, I think early on, we adopted some administrative guidelines, just trying to, to create as much flexibility as possible for businesses to be able to create outdoor spaces, particularly in the restaurant and retail sectors, but other sectors as well, services to be able to continue to operate successfully in an outdoor environment. Acknowledge the, the potential concerns with essentially creating an indoor environment outdoors that maybe would be, you know, inconsistent with some of the public health recommendations. We have not, you know, as a department, really delved into that matter. We've really been more on the, the mindset of, of being as flexible as possible in terms of allowing those, those indoor establishments to move outdoors to be successful. So that's really been our approach at this point. We haven't really come to, to enforce any kind of building code regulations out there with the exception of when you have covered spaces that, under certain sizes, that'll trigger a fire code requirement and a fire code inspection. So we've certainly made businesses aware of the need to get those inspections conducted. But otherwise, our, our mindset is, has been trying to be as flexible as possible and, and not being, you know, worried about them taking over parking spaces as long as, you know, adequate fire access and fire aisles are maintained. That's sort of of an approach.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to see, you know, what work we've done on that and kind of where we were with it. So thank you. I appreciate it. And that's all for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to say thank you to all of our law enforcement community, both the, that are employed by the city Wheat Ridge and those law enforcement that live in our city. And, and related to that today is Human Trafficking Awareness Day. And I want to thank our Wheat Ridge Police Department for all their efforts in combating human trafficking here in the city of Wheat Ridge because as much as we may want to suggest that doesn't happen, human trafficking does happen in Wheat Ridge. And today's Human Trafficking Awareness Day is really focused around the Department of Human, Department of Homeland Security's efforts in what is known as the Blue Campaign. And it is a unifying voice by the department to combat human trafficking. And it works in collaboration with law enforcement, government, non-government, private organizations to help bring those who exploit humans to justice. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. Ms. Hutchinson?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to let everybody out there know and hope that they will pass the word. If you know of anybody who is having trouble paying their rent or their mortgage payment, middle of the week last week, Brandon McManus donated $15,000 to the FamilyTree.org, if you go online for that. And also they were able to get through the bill that was recently passed by the state, 54 million in housing assistance, not specifically for them, but there is housing assistance out there. So the Family Tree is, is there to help people access these funds. So if, if they don't necessarily have the funds, they can help you find the place to access those funds. So thefamilytree.org.
Thank you very much. I would like to express the thanks to the folks who were able to join me at Coffee with the Mayor last Saturday. We had some good discussion. Our new navigator, Rebecca Rudabaugh, joined us and I want to thank her for being there. I want to express our thanks again to our national law enforcement and in particular our Wheat Ridge Police Department, the men and women there who work very hard for us to keep us safe. And we appreciate their work. So thank you very much for meeting. If there is no more business to come before the council, please stay safe out there. As Mr. Stites said, find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. And please be safe with yourself and your family and those around you. So stay distant. We, we're making progress on this, this pandemic and we will survive in good shape. So with that, we will stand adjourned. Thank you all so much. We'll see you back again pretty soon. Thanks. Good night.